We'll call a meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we begin, in accordance with the open meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. So, do the members mind if we take?
I was just gonna say, maybe Columbia Construction also. Instead of the other ones, it might take a little bit longer than.
All right. Do the members mind if we begin with Andrea's Pizza, which is item, where are we here?
Number eight.
Number eight?
Yep.
Would the members like to start with that? A little off agenda, is that all right? Okay, so can we call Andrea's forward? Please come to the podium.
Madam Chair, through you, the application before you is for an automatic amusement device, and specifically, it's for a so-called claw machine, in which the user deposits money and uses a device to select a stuffed animal or other prize of some sort. You see that there's some documentation that's in there from the various departments relative to the license. No significant issues or concerns raised relative to the location that's being requested. Again, this is for their new location, which is further north up on Main Street. I don't know their exact address on Main Street, but.
One ninety-seven A.
For their new spot.
Do the members have any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the following automatic amusement device license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department required requirements, Andrea's House of Pizza.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Selectman Schultz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Unanimous. Parents and grandparents, bring your quarters. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do the members mind if we take up on the, the next item? What's the number?
Number seven.
Where, oh, that's where I can't find it.
One-day wine and malt beverage license.
One-day wine and malt beverage license, Columbia Construction?
Yep.
Is there anyone here? Could you step to the podium, please?
Madam Chair, through you, the board members have in their packet this evening a series of comments back from the various departments that reviewed this application for a one-day license for an event to be held at the River Park facility. I believe there's a representative who's here this evening that can speak more specifically to the event, so I'll defer to her.
Thank you. In recognizing you, would you please state your name for the record?
Amelia Howard with Columbia Construction. We'll be hosting a, it's a charity event fundraiser for one of our employees who has just diagnosed with brain cancer, the same one that John McCain just had. So, the fundraiser, all the proceeds are gonna go into a trust for his family, which I provided the tax ID number on the description letter as well.
Members have any questions?
No. How many different food vendors are you gonna have?
There's two food vendors, Roxy's Grilled Cheese and Red Bones Barbecue. Both have been in touch with the Board of Health. They'll be arriving early on that day, and the Board of Health will inspect them at noon.
Are they get catering? I know they get a one-day license or a catering license?
I'm not sure on that one. That's being handled by another employee of Columbia.
Just a heads-up, we've run some of these events? They will.
Okay.
Just make sure they have their license for that day to serve food off-site.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the following one-day wine and malt beverage license for use on September twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, between the hours of one PM and five, five PM, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Columbia Construction Company, one hundred River Park Drive.
Second?
Motion and a second by Selectman Schultz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with that.
So, moving along, we are at public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? No one. All right, so our next order of the Selectmen's reports.
Madam Chair, just in relation to our ongoing water projects, and we need to acquire a site for the treatment plants, for chlorination treatment plant on Route twenty-eight, Mr. Mosseri, myself, and Mara Clark will be meeting with the principal owners of a location on Main Street tomorrow afternoon to continue discussions which started about a week ago, and we'll have an update for the Board at our next meeting on that.
I'd just like to thank the individual, individuals who made an anonymous donation of a panel truck to the food pantry. The individual or individuals who did have asked not to, for the name, not for public attention, so. But the truck is on-site, and I believe it's been used, so. Up to now, individuals that volunteer for the food pantry have taken their own vehicles into Boston to pick up food weekly, and now with the panel truck, they're able to do it without, using the truck instead of their own vehicles. Second thing is related to getting a better explanation out regarding the reason the trash bill has been increased. I think there are a number of people in the public, based on the chatter on the web, that don't fully understand why. And I'll just say that the main cause and its effect, not only North Reading, but most of the towns in the area, and the fact that China has stopped accepting recyclables, requiring the benefit that we were getting from that has gone away, which has forced the cost of trash removal to go higher. That's all I have.
And I think to that point, it had been a number of years since the fee was implemented that it had not been raised. I think it was the ten years or maybe longer.
Correct.
We needed to do that to absorb the extra cost it was gonna be because of all those recycling-related issues.
If it's any consolation, we are not alone. The cost of trash removal and recycling for all communities across Commonwealth and across the country have escalated substantially. We certainly have benefited from some long-term contracts that we've negotiated over the last few years, which are now expired and had to be renegotiated. So, this is just an adjustment to cover the costs associated with it.
Mr. Schultz? Ms. Mosseri, did you have something?
I will state that it's been the effort of all the citizens of the town to continue to recycle, and we're not suggesting that they don't continue that, because that has kept us from, prevented us from raising the recycling, the trash rate all these years, so.
We have a great advocate in Ed McGrath as well, and I think he, he provided something that's an informational to help, to help people understand. I was throwing bags into mine recycling for the longest time until I saw his informational. So, he's been great about getting the word out, and all of his services of volunteer, everything that he's been doing is volunteer for us, so. I think that was posted, right, Mr. Gilberto?
I'm sorry, I stepped away from the desk for a moment.
Mr. McGrath had an informational on what could be recycled and what should not be recycled. I know I saw it on one of the websites.
I seem to recall it being posted in the early spring, but we'll go back and make sure if it, if it was posted and it's dropped down to the bottom of the list, we'll get it back up on the top.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, a couple of recreational items. First of all, in late August, I met with a group of folks and some folks at Town Hall about exploring the possibility of a bike trail, rail, on the old rail bed going through North Reading, and there's some state funding available that has matching federal grants that if we can pull this off, and I don't know if we can or cannot, but we are exploring it, along the same lines, I met earlier today for a couple of hours, some folks that wanna have a dog park in town as well. That's another thing we're gonna explore and see if it's feasible. Just wanna let the folks out there know that we are looking at these issues, and they're both in their infancy, but we are looking at them.
Anybody else? I'm gonna say something. Usually, Mr. Mosseri says schools back in, so just a reminder to people, be cautious as you're driving. Those, those lights on Central aren't, the goal isn't to make them light up, the goal is to keep them unlit, slow down, and, and buses are coming to and from, and just respect the rules of the road. Let the kids get on and off the buses, and, you know, be careful, that's all.
Just one other thing in relation to Mr. Schultz's comments in relation to the rail trail, bike trail.
Dog park.
Dog park. I've also had some inquiries and suggestions that we look at to, maybe this is kind of Land Utilization Committee or somebody, community garden. You know, so if you could incorporate that in an overall plan and discussion with whoever you're talking with, I think that would bode well, because I know there are some people who have contacted me and said, you know, this is a good idea, and it's a great thing to have, and a lot of communities have it, and we certainly have some space, so.
It's a great idea.
All we need is a little water, and we're gonna have plenty of water, so.
We have it in Malden, we have one in Malden, and I can volunteer the contracts that we drew up for participants, so.
Oh, that's great. So, if we can find a spot and find some water for people, and I think it's just another good thing for the community to offer if we have the space and the inclination to do so. So, if we can include that in your discussions, that would be great.
Dogs and veggies.
Dogs and veggies, that's it.
Mr. Mosseri?
Yeah, seeing the police chief is here, just curious as to how the rerouting of the traffic around the bachelor school worked out today.
It's actually been very good. We've kept all the traffic off of Hayrow Street. I think Friday, tomorrow will be the test, because it'll be a full day of kindergarten, so, but we have officers that are there dedicated to making sure everything's flowing well, as well as the other schools, so it's working out very well.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving along. Our next item on the agenda is a discussion of National Grid, a vote, a possible vote on guidance or instructions.
Madam Chair, as you are well aware and recall at the last two Selectmen's meetings, we had Representative, one of our constituents, Mr. David Monahan, come before the Board and ask the Board to consider a moratorium or some other action in relation to the employee lockout at National Grid and the impact that it's having on services provided to the customers and the community as a whole in relation to natural gas. In addition to that, also, we touched on the impact on the employees who have been locked out, you know, who are no longer collecting any wages, and their benefits have been suspended in relation to health insurance. At the time of the last meeting, we had some brief discussion, I said that I would offer some form of a resolution or guidance or something for the Board to consider in relation to the National Grid situation. I have put something together and circulated it to the members of the Board, but before I read it and propose it formally, I think I'd just like to touch on a few of the subjects that we had touched on before, and we have, and Mr. Monahan again is, is still here, is here again, with, I think, a colleague, part of the negotiating team, who would like to also address the Board. But, if you recall in the public, if they recall, the Board asked the administration to reach out to National Grid management to come and present their case after Mr. Monahan first came before the Board, and they declined the invitation, basically stating that they, they don't want to discuss the labor dispute in public, public meetings. So, an opportunity has been given to National Grid, they've declined to come before the Board and discuss it. Now, while they did meet with some members of the administration and did exchange some correspondence, which has all been shared with the Board, so that we know their positions and rationale behind it, so we're, we've been made well aware as to what National Grid's position is. You know, it's important to note that, you know, National Grid again is the sole supplier of gas to our community. They have basically a monopoly in delivering services, and the concern that I have as a member of the Board, I'm sure some members of the Board here also share, is that their decision, again, and I don't question their right of their decision from a strategic standpoint, to do what they've done. I may not like what they did, and I may not condone it, but, you know, they made a conscious decision in the course of labor negotiations to make a decision, but that decision impacts this community. It impacts this community from questioning as to what type of work is being done here and by whom. Again, they've replaced twelve-hundred-and-fifty employees with seven-hundred of their own management staff and office staff to do the work out on the road, and contracted approximately six-hundred other people. So, they've got thirteen-hundred people doing the work of the twelve-hundred-and-fifty. Now, the question comes, are they getting the work done, and are they meeting the needs of our community from a public health, public safety, and economic development standpoint? They have made no bones about it. They have stated publicly, through correspondence and in articles and magazines and newspapers, that they're pretty much limiting their work to emergency calls only, and mandated responsibilities as far as compliance, you know, for public, for safety issues only, and they have not, they do not have the ability and have not been able to meet the needs of non-emergency situations, which includes, again, new tie-ins for new homes, new tie-ins for subdivisions, new tie-ins for new developments, and whether it be a CVS, whether it's gonna be Pulte Homes, all of these things have been put on the back burner because of their inability to meet the demands and the needs of the community. That impacts us. And I think it's important that this Board take a position somehow to express our consternation, our concerns with who's actually doing the work and how's it being monitored, and the impact that it's having on our community from an economic development and public service methodology. So, it's, so again, I've prepared something and circulated it to the members of the Board for your consideration, and I'll, I'll read it later on, and then we can discuss it. In the meantime, with the permission of the Chair, maybe call Mr. Monahan again to, again, reiterate position, he is a constituent, an employee of National Grid, a member of the Union, their position, the impact it's had, what they believe the impact is on our community, as well as their own families, and then I believe he is a representative from the negotiating team also.
Ms. Monahan, can you step up to the podium and just maybe address some of these concerns? We have, you know, we have heard from you the past two meetings, but I think it'd be helpful if you, if the Board, any of the Board members have any questions?
Certainly.
To what extent you can answer, and that would be a big help.
Can I state my name and address again for the record?
That would be great, yes. And if you could just briefly give us, you know, a brief synopsis, 'cause we have heard from you in the previous two meetings, so.
Yep. My name is David Monahan, I live at forty-two Wilson Ave here in North Reading. I've appeared at the last two Selectmen's meetings to request some form of a moratorium or restrictions on the gas company and pipeline projects here in town while we were out. Here with me today is Jimmy Mariolis. He has more experience in the specifics of, I work on the service side where I go into customers' homes, Jimmy works on the side where he's involved directly in the projects and has past experience in that. As far as what would transpire in one of these projects that we're asking for the moratorium, he might be able to answer some of the questions a little bit better, but I would be happy to. Basically, we've been out of work.
Is Jimmy, I don't mean to interrupt you, but is Jimmy from North Reading as well?
Jimmy is not.
Okay. Where are you from, Jimmy?
I am from Westwood, Mass. I represent employees out of the Lowell Shop that serves on North Reading. I've worked for the company thirty-one years, and I'm the Vice President of the Union.
Mr. Monahan, how long have you been out of work?
I have been out of work since the morning of June twenty-fifth.
Jimmy, what's your full name? Just for the record.
James Mariolis.
I just preliminarily have two or three questions for you, because I didn't get to ask them the last time, but did the Union vote to walk off?
No. We voted to not accept the contract, and we offered to continue working under the terms of the old contract, which we've done at the bequest of the company at both of the last contract expirations, and we continued under both of those circumstances.
So, in other words, you didn't vote to strike?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I think we've all read or heard, or there's a lot of discussion about a lockout, and I think we can all assume what that is, but what exactly, if you could briefly explain, what's the, what is a lockout?
A lock, can I hear you argue? A lockout is when the company takes action to not allow us to come to work, quite simply. We had offered to, and again, you're talking about contract bargaining now, and I'm certainly the safety ass, who's number one, but because of the company's actions, that's why they have put people at potential risk. I mean, safest part of the cities and towns is when we're all doing our jobs. But a lockout, to answer you, we offered to extend the contract as we have the prior two contracts, very difficult bargaining with this company, but nonetheless, we reached agreements. This, for this case, they seem to have taken this hard, hard line to, we feel, put, put public risk in their own workers, but that's what a lockout. We go back tomorrow, if they let us work under the existing conditions, and we are continuing to try to bargain with them right now.
So, the lockout, no wages being paid, and no benefits, including health insurance benefits?
Correct.
With the?
We received a letter at our home, dated the day that we were told we couldn't come to work when we all showed up, saying that our healthcare was canceled effective July first, which was the start of the month afterwards.
Mr. Mosseri?
How many times has the Union met with the gas company since the lockout?
Since the lockout, we've had five bargaining sessions.
And has any progress been made?
The company hasn't moved in any of their positions, so we are still trying to bargain all outstanding proposals that we have, 'cause quite frankly, they just ran the clock out, put an offer on us, and, again, we did vote on it, but it did not, it did not pass. We feel that the bargaining process wasn't complete, and, again, it's very, very unfortunate that, you know, again, I'm a little surprised that you're asking about contract, which is fine, because this is just unnecessary, what the company has done. And furthermore, as this is going on and on, doesn't seem to have any end in sight any time yet, the cost of all this, the millions of dollars on, on additional police, details, hotels for these contract workers, the cost is just going up and up, hotels to put them in, ten to fifteen people on a job for an emergency, that would take us two or three experienced people. It's unfathomable. So, we are on our end, working that, but again, who's going to pay for this? I would hope it's not the city and towns residents on their rate case, and what's going on, there's just so much to this. So, certainly, we implore you to take some kind of action for the safety, first and foremost, of the residents, and to mitigate any, you know, anything that you can from stricter oversight. Certainly, on our end, we are engaging the DPU. We are going out, trying to deal with any other officials, public officials we can, and we're trying to get back to work. So, I'm sorry to go on, thank you for allowing me to speak. If there are any more questions.
Mr. Schultz?
Just a couple of questions, guys. And first, I hope you guys resolve this and get back to work, first and foremost, nobody wants to see a family without a paycheck. National, I think I read somewhere on National Grid's materials, they're claiming the contractors they're using are the same contractors they've used in the past?
Yeah, yeah. The question, on that, let me just explain that. We protect life in public, almost like you're fired. These contractors, they install new mains, new work, and we generally have inspectional people that we do, which is another very critical part of what we do. There's a couple of different levels of inspection. In this particular case, those contractors, they might have a crew leader, and they have some laborers, and they put in pipe, and they do some tie-in work, and it's a controlled situation, we have oversight. But what, what they're trying to tell you is, we have to have certain qualifications as pinpointing leaks, responding to a broken line, odor investigations, all kinds of qualified operator tasks. On our crews, on our personnel, everybody has these task qualifications. I've been here thirty-one years, and I can tell you a great example. The Lowell Folk Fest was horribly, there was a leak all weekend long, and I could tell by just seeing what was going on, they weren't trying to pinpoint a leak. They took measurements, and they dug hole to a particular fitting, 'cause I know the job, I've done it, and they dug a second hole, and they were just, I almost was saying, what are they doing? They're just trying to just dig and say, it's called sealing a bell joint, it was a spigot joint. They dug a third hole only because during that weekend, and I'm really narrowing down a whole weekend.
Yeah, I don't think we need to know about the law. My question is, is it the same?
To your point of experience, though?
That's what I wanted to get to.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
So, so these people here, they have one, one, there was a retired supervisor just last week in Drakeen. He had eight contractors handing over him, and I was trying to watch, train him how to pinpoint a leak, and that's only if he's around. And there's another case that happened, South Street in Tewksbury at Main Street about a month ago. Gas was blowing for three hours because there was a particular type of tee, called the tomahawk tee. And just understand, you have to have a certain way of pin, putting a pinpoint tool in it. Well, they had to wait for one of the experienced supervisors to come over and do that, because the other people they have do not normally typically do that work.
They're not completing the work they normally do. Yes, they normally work for the company.
They're doing different things.
They do one specific task, they're being asked to do many different tasks that aren't in their normal duties.
Okay. The other question I have for you guys, I saw, I mean, again, National Grid's letters are PR from National Grid, and I get that. They're laying out the issues that they're saying, look, the Union's being unreasonable, of course, they're gonna say that. What are the, like, what are the top issues that are holding you guys back on? Is, I mean, I can see there's four or five issues, I'm sure there's one or two that are real sticking points. What are the biggest ones?
Okay, real, real, real quick, but very, very important is healthcare. This company make billions, again, how much money they make, say, is that relevant or not relevant? Well, they make more money, three-point-five billion, six billion in operating. We just wanna maintain our healthcare, we wanna bargain fairly, we want to treat it fairly. We had, we tried to counterpropose the medical, but the company didn't seem to wanna.
Because what they're saying, and again, I'm just, this is what they're saying.
Sure, sure, sure. No, fair enough.
They're offering, according to them, they're offering a plan that I know as a private employer.
Yes.
Is better than what I have personally.
Sure.
Is the Union looking for a no-deductible plan?
We, we've had that, we're trying to maintain that.
Yeah.
And again, it's amazing, I'm kinda blown away here, but I'm glad to talk bargaining with you to some degree, certainly not to forget the safety piece of it, but on that, you know, we, we, we could, I could tell you, and you, this is what I mean.
Yeah.
We have a bargaining history, sir, and we have given up things in the past to maintain certain things. The fact that we just had a two-year contract, when other people got five-year contracts, they made heavy concessions on the future. Now, the big sticking point is certainly, you've come to work with me, you do the same job next to me, you do not have a pension, you do not have the same medical retiree, healthcare that I do, you create a serious lesser class of worker.
Eating or young.
Exactly.
But that's the way, that's the way all negotiations are these days, though, is the Union?
I don't know about that, I tend to differ, I think, at least with our collective bargaining, we should make our own deal.
Well, with the health insurance, though, it's, it's, the price of health insurance has gone up exponentially more than the price of everything else in this world. So, the idea of no, I just, I wanna see you guys back to work, but I, if you're trying to get a no-deductible plan, I think that's something that was available ten years ago that doesn't exist anymore in most companies.
I'd like to actually redirect this really to what we're here on.
Just a short comment on that. The way I alluded to other people. The way I've alluded to other people when I've had this conversation in my personal life is, most people, when they go for their yearly review at work, don't hope to get less than what they already have. If we were to accept the terms of what they had offered us, we would receive less.
That's fair. I hope you guys work this out, I really do.
Yeah, we weren't asking for anything new, we were only asking to keep what we had, so nothing that we're asking for that is a sticking point is something that we don't already receive.
But you guys realize what you already receive costs a lot more now. That's the problem, it's the health insurance.
As I said to you, we were bargaining, we had a counterproposal.
If I could just redirect this, I think really what, what our concerns are certainly is, is the overall impact that this lockout is having on our community.
Yep.
And I can appreciate the information and the things that you're referencing from the other communities, I just, I just, we have our public safety officials here, we have heard from them in the previous meeting indicate to us that, that there, there aren't any public safety. I really want us to be clear, because of the members of the public that are watching and listening, to make sure we're not unnecessarily scaring people into thinking that they're unsafe in their homes, or they're unsafe on the streets of North Reading. But I, I'd like to us to just talk to our public safety officials to really address, to speak to what they, what if anything they are aware of in terms of permitting or permitting process or work that's being performed here by the contractors that, you know, already were working for National Grid that might raise a concern, if, if, if you don't mind. We have our Director of Public Safety here, you've heard from him at the previous meeting, Chief Murphy, we have the Fire Chief here, thank you, and we have our new Director, DPU Director here, and appreciate all you attending here. If we could just hear from you, that'd be great.
Sure. Madam Chair, so, since the last meeting, I have known of no installations or any work being done by National Grid. I think clearly the work in and of itself is dangerous, and it's a public safety concern for us, but I believe there's significant oversight, both through the company and with the state. But I don't think there's, there's any more concern today than there has been, from at least my perspective. Certainly, the Fire Chief could speak to his department, but I just don't see it. I, I know that I heard some talk that they were gonna tell us of what the safety issues are. I've talked with National Grid, I've talked to their subcontractors, I don't know if there were any complaints prior to the lockout about the subcontractors, but my understanding it's the same subcontractors. So, our position is that, at least from the public safety and on the police side of it, is there's no more concern today than there was before June.
Than there ever has been, just because of the nature of the work.
Yes.
Chief, did you want to add anything?
Sure, I'd like to reiterate some of what Chief Murphy has already said. We've, we've not received any concerns or complaints regarding those safety concern with National Grid. Two concerns that I do have, something that Mr. O'Leary has addressed, is, is will this impact the Polty Homes project, and will this impact the CBS project, the buildings going in there? So, that, that remains to be seen, and I hope to have more information at our future dates, so.
You probably have a bit more in terms of that, because those are all scheduled and on schedules for certain completion dates.
So we haven't had an abundance of permit applications since I started here, but we do have six active right now, and, you know, some of those are new service, new gas service, retire old service, what I would consider as relatively minor work, although I don't think any gas work can, can be considered minor from a safety standpoint. But I haven't, I haven't seen, and I spoke at length today with the Town Engineer about what he's seen in relation to any gas work, and it's, it's, again, what the, both chiefs have, have stated, I'll reiterate that we haven't noticed any changes in the way we do business and the way we interact with the gas company.
Members have any questions? Ms. O'Leary?
No question, we'll comment. Again, I placed a call to the State Department of Public Utilities, just to get their perspective on it, and at about three-thirty, quarter to four this afternoon, I got a call from the Chief of Staff and two senior management level people from the Safety and Engineering Division, which oversees the gas companies. And I spent about twenty minutes, half an hour on the phone with them, asking them a series of questions as to what role do they really play, you know, what is their role, what role do they play, what oversight do they have, and what types of checks do they have in place in order to ensure that the National Grid and other companies are in They stated that, first of all, that they, their business plan is status quo, you know, where there's two permits issued or two thousand permits issued, you know, they have a job to do and they do it. Their responsibility is to ensure that there's compliance with federal regulations. So the state has oversight to ensure compliance with federal regulations. They have the authority to do job site visitations, inspections, now both announced, scheduled and unannounced, which they do and they continue to do. They have the authority and access to information on an individual worker-by-worker basis to ensure compliance with certifications for specific tasks that are assigned, and access to information which would provide them knowledge as to whether or not the individual worker has certifications up to date and has taken the most recent tests and is eligible to, to work. And they occasionally check that also. They have also indicated that there's been an uptick in complaints on National Grid, you know, as a result of the lockouts. They said that each and every complaint that they receive is taken very seriously, investigated, adjudicated, and determinations are made. They have a significant number of them ongoing now. They did not indicate, I did ask them, I said, you know, have you had any uptick in violations or non-compliance, and they said they're not in a position to say whether or not they were or they were not, other than we can be assured that they're doing their job and they're investigating each and every complaint. So it didn't surprise me to say, yes, you know, we have some, they did or they did not.
Who's the complaining party, National Grid or...
No, no, complaints about National Grid.
Oh, about them, okay.
Yeah, regarding National Grid. So complaints for work product, qualifications of individuals, whatever the, whatever the complaint is.
Oh, then what they said they wrote...
You know, whether, you know, if you had a gas leak at your home and, you know, wasn't, responded to it on a timely basis, and you called the DPU, that's an investigation.
Okay.
You know, so it's complaints about the company, by consumers, or the community, or whomever. So it's, so again, they have regular onsite investigators and supervision, they have, again, scheduled, they'll tell National Grid that we're gonna be down at the corner of the Main and North Street, ten o'clock Monday morning, to oversee the site, or they may just show up unannounced. So, they said there is an uptick. I asked them if there were other communities that had been in communication with them and expressed any concerns, they said they had not. They were notified by other communities, numerous other communities, that have instituted moratoriums or restrictions on permits to National Grid, but no one had actually reached out to them and asked them for assistance or guidance. So, I guess we're the first ones. I was the first one. But they have been notified by those communities that moratoriums are in place. And again, there was a recent article in the supplement to the transcript where numerous communities in the area here have issued moratoriums, local boards, selectmen, aldermen, city councils have implemented moratoriums or more restrictions on the permitting of National Grid as a result of the lockouts. So it was an interesting conversation. I asked them if they could lend some assistance to our community if we were looking for some additional oversight, they weren't overly enjoyed with offering. They did not commit, but did not say that they would not if we asked for, you know, verification of certifications of some workers' credentials, they said they were capable of checking those. Didn't say that they would, but they said they were capable of checking those, and they do that on a regular basis anyway. So, I find that somewhat heartening, at least that, you know, if we had some concerns about who's working on a specific job site, or we had some complaints, or heard some complaints, or just observations that, you know, people seem to be chasing their tail, or some of the examples that these two gentlemen were pointing out, you know, then we should have some legitimate concerns in relation to potential public safety issues. There is no doubt, and again, the DPU made it quite clear, that, first of all, that it's National Grid's responsibility, responsibility to ensure that qualified, certified people are working on the job sites, and the people are required to have certain credentials and certifications. He says, "That responsibility lies with National Grid." They check it, you know, but it's National Grid's responsibility. So they're aware of the situation, they said there has been an uptick in complaints, they said that there has been a significant downturn in the number of jobs that are going on because of National Grid's inability to take on non-emergency work. They said that they have been notified by National Grid that they are looking at, looking to address only emergency situations, and I don't know what the categories, one, two, and three of...
Leaks.
The leaks, leak categories are one, two, and three, and some other category, which I'm totally unfamiliar with. And National Grid has informed them that that's, that they're concentrating their efforts on, as well as mandated compliance issues in relation to, you know, maintaining, maintaining some lines. So, and, they don't, they've been informed that they don't expect an awful lot of non-emergency work to be completed. And again, that comes back to our projects and people's ability to, to get the services they need. So that was the conversation I had, and I appreciated them getting back to me, and again, it was Chief of Staff and two senior officials in the Safety and Engineering Division of the, of the DPU, so.
I should add that I did call the General Counsel, and he did call back, but I missed the call, so they are pretty responsive over there.
They're very responsive, and, and they were willing to take whatever time was needed to inform me as to what their processes are, what their oversight is, what the, the extent of the oversight is, and their responsibilities, where they lie and where they don't. And again, he referred back to, you know, the cities and towns, you know, have certain responsibilities, and I said, yeah, but that's only from the meter into the structure. He said, exactly, so.
I also, I think it, that seems to reiterate, I don't mean to interrupt you...
No, that's fine.
I think it seems to reiterate what they wrote to us in their letter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gilberto, but they did say that they were more geared to or focused towards the emergency work, right?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have two, two letters of correspondence from them, or emails to, to the Chief, and then the publications from Commonwealth Magazine and some other article publication that they, they've put out that's saying this is what they, that they've actually done. Now, again, we were asked by Mr. Monahan at the first meeting to consider a moratorium, you know, after I've considered it, and it's included in the statement here, a moratorium is basically already in place. National Grid has already placed a moratorium on themselves, and their, and their inability to meet the, the demands that are currently being asked of them is minimal, and they've admitted it. You know, so, you know, while they locked out twelve hundred and fifty people, they supposedly have six hundred contract employees and seven hundred supervisory employees, you know, that's thirteen hundred to replace them to do the work, but obviously, they're unable to do that from a, a number, they have plenty of numbers, they have the bodies, but they haven't got the bodies with the proficiency to do it in an efficient, timely, and cost-effective manner, so.
So, Mr. O'Leary, I think we, we have really discussed this as a board, and I do want to give the other members a chance to talk, and we did see, which is why the, we should alert the public, why there was an amendment to the agenda at the last one, it was, it was on as a subcategory for discussion, but Mr. O'Leary submitted a proposal, I think at the last meeting we had left it, that you would submit a proposal for us to consider. I did review it, I, I mean, I, I'd like to hear from the other members as well, I don't know if it's something you want to read into the record, or we, we have had the opportunity to take a look.
Well, it was be my intention, it's entirely up to the Chair how you want to handle it, to make a motion to accept the contents of the memorandum, guidance as proposed, for the Board to accept. Basically, it's, it's stating some of the facts here, and basically giving the administration some guidance to move forward in relation to the permitting process.
So I have a motion, do I have a second on that?
I, I didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, I thought you did, all right.
That would be my intention.
Yeah, okay.
But, but again, I didn't know if you wanted to continue with the discussion.
I do, I, I would, if the other members would like an opportunity to, to speak to the proposed memo. Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, Mr. Monahan, you've been here, I think, three times now?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I know Jimmy, I didn't get your last name, but thanks, again, guys, thanks for coming, I really hope you guys wrap this up, I, it sounds like you guys are out of loggerheads, and I hope cooler heads can prevail and you guys can get back to work. My only concern on this is us, we're hearing what you're saying, we're seeing what they're telling us, and I want to say for the record, we've invited them, I think, Mr. Gilberto, a couple of times now to come?
Only once, and they respectfully declined.
And they've declined, so they had an opportunity to be here as well, they've chose not to be, you guys choose to be here, and I respect that. I just have a problem with us taking a side in this, only because it's not our purview. I hope you guys get back to work tomorrow, I really do. I just think it's hard for us, when we, we're negotiating with, I don't, how many unions do we negotiate here at a town hall? It's probably...
Townwide, seven.
Seven or eight units, okay. And the school committee negotiates with unions too?
Four or five units.
I just don't think we should be taking a stance on a public, on a private labor dispute, unless there's a public safety issue, I think, and that's a different, that's a public safety issue. I don't want you guys to think my reluctance to endorse is, is anything to do with taking a side in your dispute, because it's not. I just think if we do it for you, we're doing it for everybody, and I don't know how it would look to other employees in Town Hall, if we're getting involved in a private labor dispute, and we may have a, an issue, we're negotiating, we're going to mediation with the union here. I just think it's inappropriate for us, but my opinion does not reflect in one bit on your guys' dispute. Again, I hope you're back to work tomorrow, I just don't see how we really, as a board, should be getting involved in this, it doesn't involve us.
If I, if I just may, just, obviously, I, I do get the sense you think more of it's, it's a labor dispute, and that's pretty much all there is, and you feel that either the DPU or the town officials are gonna be fine if a line gets hit, or there's a leak, and the response time, and the level of service that we're telling you, based on what we've observed, and the people that come out to respond to these issues, as I just said in Tuxbury, it's three hours, if we were all fully staffed with all our crews, it would not, I, I'm very confident to say that. So, again, I, I do appreciate your, your comments and your, your feedback on that, but if, obviously, you think it's just a contract matter, then the other, you know, DPU will look into these complaints, we're, what I understand, they, they are starting to look into them, and they're only complaints until they have an opportunity to investigate and be out. There used to be ten DPU commissioners, now they're down to three.
For the public, if you could explain what DPU is?
Oh, Department of Public Utilities, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Department of Public Utilities, the oversight. So obviously, that's one major layer that's, that's overseeing, so, again, thank, thank you, but there are, there is level of services, I said inspections, if there's work, roadwork, sidewalks being done, there was a good example in Lowell, there was a crew doing a new sidewalk with conduit, that happens up here in North Reading at times, there's work that's done. The main is along the shoulder, well, we go out and pick at the job sites, we observe, we're watching, and when we see something, we say something. And we saw that there was a coating on a, on a pipe, crew came out, replacement crew came out, they didn't even strip the coating on the outside of the main, put primer on and coat, they just put, and we explained that to them, and then they left, and we could see from a distance, because we only get so close, we saw another bubble, another nicked coating, which could be a potential leak in the future, and they called them back to come back. So I just say that there's a certain level of inspections, like, we have designated people that come out, and they mark out the gas lines, or if there's a, what they call a foreign opening inspector. Is anybody, I've been to other towns, and they haven't seen either Ed or Dave, you know what, and they'll come up, any jobs, water installations, they come out regularly, Chuck, Chuck is some, some of the town people probably know, Chuck. And he comes out and he checks, and he has, there's certain levels of, of service that, quite frankly, I don't think is being done as well.
I would agree with that, yeah.
So, again, thank you, I didn't mean to go on.
No, I agree with you, it's just, it's hard for us to get involved in one...
Don't want you to take a side, just want you to take a look at potential, and that's why I say this to you, is that there is some issues other than the contract.
I totally appreciate why you guys are here.
Thank you.
And again, just to Mr. Schultz's point, and again, you raised the point at the last meeting, you know, should we get involved in, you know, with a stop and shop, and the answer is no. This is an issue which is impacting our community from, if you're not even gonna say public safety, it's a, it's a community development standpoint.
Yes.
Our needs cannot be met, admittedly, by National Grid because of a decision that they made through their contract negotiations. I'm not gonna question their motives or their intentions or anything else, or the specifics of the, of the, the differences of opinion here, but their decision to lock these professionals out is impacting our community. And again, whether you want to believe it's public safety issue or not, a potential public safety issue or not, we could, you know, argue that till, till midnight, although the Chair won't let us, you know, but, but the, but the issue where they can't service our needs...
Yeah, that's an issue.
That's an issue.
Mr. O'Leary, I do want to give Mr. Mossieri an opportunity, actually, as well.
Absolutely, yep.
I'm just mindful of the time, and I do want to keep us to, on, on task, and, but I do, I do, Mr. Mossieri, do you have any comment or anything you want to add to this deliberation?
Basically, my concern focuses, obviously, around the safety issue, but we have a couple of projects in town that we know they need to be done, and the moratorium that was discussed earlier... earlier, from my point of view, is off the table, because I don't want to give the gas company, National Grid, a, an excuse, right, for not getting something done. Now, Steve's right, they may not be able to get it done, but I'm not going to give them the excuse of blaming the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, or the town of North Reading. This is almost an impossible situation. You have a union, and you have a company, and they can't come to an agreement. We know we've had those kinds of issues in our negotiations with our employees, and the issue is more of, I like to hear that they're, you know, I did hear that the employees have said, "Look, we'll continue to talk, and we'll continue to work." And National Grid said, "No, you're out of here." Right? That's problematic, but I don't know how to change that. I don't think we have any influence at all on that. I mean, it can make a lot of noise, or you can make it even harder to get something done, but that doesn't make a lot of sense either. So, I know Mr. O'Leary put this together, and I'm not necessarily against it, because it's, it's not a moratorium, at least the way I read it. But I'm not sure, whatever we do, I can't think of something that we can do that can change the situation. I think the guys here, and their union and National Grid, clearly, if they could get together and resolve the issue in one form or another, that's the solution. The other thing could be that the state, and this is when you were going into the DPU, could start to put some pressure on National Grid to get the appropriate resources online from a safety point of view. But, you know, we can't write a letter to them at this moment and say, you know, "We got a gas leak down the street, we may have one tomorrow," but, you know, we don't have any major issue to even complain to the DPU about, that I can see. So, I mean, I sit here frustrated, saying, "I don't know what to do." And most of the time, I can come up with something on what we should do. In this case, you know, all we can do is, you know, get it in the newspaper, and maybe put pressure on National Grid, but we don't have a lot of leverage, because we don't have something that we can hold against them at this point. So, this is where we are, sorry.
I do want to add to my two cents. I, I agree, I don't think what's, I thought what you were going to propose would be something a little bit different than that, and I feel that what's proposed really puts this sort of burden and liability on us, rather than where it should be, which is on National Grid. Even in the scenarios that you are describing to us, if those occur, National Grid owns that, and I wouldn't want us to have extra oversight of their responsibility under the statute or under the regulations. And I also wouldn't want to burden DPU and have DPU and every little last permit involving us. I mean, it's very clear from our public safety officials here, we don't have the same scenarios going on that you are describing, and you've said, you are, you are public safety officials yourselves, you know, I think that we have people that are details, right, at these sites, performing details at these sites, if there's an emergency or...
We would, yeah, we would.
Yeah, and I mean, they'd be like you, standing there, you know, ensuring that it's being taken care of, right?
Traffic.
Oh, not, you're not there?
Yeah, if I may, I mean, we would provide traffic detail, but we would be overseeing the project.
No, I mean, in terms of if you saw something that was an emergency scenario, that's why you're there, right?
We would know why.
That's why you're there, right? And I, I feel like in the, in the long term, or in the end, to step in as a board, it's because it's impacting our residents or our businesses, which easily, you've easily made that case, and everything that we're reading easily makes that case, that they're delaying services, or not even being able to provide services because of this lockout, it's directly because of it, and that in the long term, that is going to impact us, and then ultimately, the ratepayers are the ones that are going to be probably, in the end, you know, absorbing what's going on here, right? In the end, that's, that's where it's going to, that's whose pocket it's probably going to come out of. I really feel, I feel you make a compelling case, because no, we don't want to see, none of us wants to see anybody out of work without health insurance or locked out, but I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Mosseri in terms of this, I don't really see this as being helpful in any way, and I don't want us, I wouldn't want us assuming the responsibility that it's directly upon National Grid in terms of the work that they are doing.
If, and again, after some feedback from members of the Board and the Administrator, I made some modifications from what was originally circulated to you and included in here, so that, you know, the burdens would be less on the town, and the, the checking of National Grid, and the workers and the credentials of the workers can be addressed. I mean, obviously, the staffing of the mass DPU, Department of Public Utilities is limited, and the demands on them and the complaints that are being filed are going to stress those even more, so their ability to go out on site and do what has to be done, and check on people who haven't normally been doing these types of tasks is going to be exponentially more. But in, to Mr. Mosseri's point, you know, as to, you know, what, it is frustrating, what can we do? And to me, I think it's important that, you know, we join the chorus here with some of the other communities who have already taken a stand to highlight the concerns that they have and we have, from a public safety, public interest, and a community development standpoint, and again, from a moral standpoint in relation to the methodology which was employed by National Grid to take away people's wages and health insurance in order to force them to, you know, to an agreement. That, that's not right. You know, so, these other communities have taken a strong stand, and I think we should join the chorus. And in addition to that, I think it's important in time now for communities such as us to call on the state administration to get involved in the negotiations, you know, again, there is some leverage there, and I think if the governor were to get involved, or the DPW commissioners were to get involved and say, you know, "Listen, come to the table, and we want experienced workers back to the table here, and we want you to be able to service the needs of the communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts," I think that goes a long way. But they're not going to act unless there's a groundswell of support and grassroots outrage in relation to what's really being done here. So, what I've proposed here, again, is, allows an awful lot of discretion for the administration as to what they want to do, and at this point, Madam Chair, I guess I'll make the motion and read it, if that's okay, and then we can do what you want with it. All right? So, Madam Chair, I move to incorporate into the minutes, and as guidance for the administration, the following statement and memorandum. "The North Reading Board of Selectmen takes the issues of public health, safety, and economic development as paramount. At the direction of the Board, the administration reached out to National Grid management. National Grid informed the administration that their company policy is not to discuss the labor dispute in public meetings, and declined an invitation to speak with the Board. While the Board respects their position, the effects of their decision and labor negotiation strategies is impacting current development projects and raising significant public safety concerns. While the Board of Selectmen would not normally opine or inject itself into private sector contract issues, this current situation poses legitimate concern for public safety, public safety and delivery of services by National Grid to our community. National Grid's decision to lock out 1,250 of its most experienced, certified, job-specifically trained, seasoned professionals has impacted its ability to address emergency, mandated compliance, and maintenance work, and non-emergency expansion needs in a timely, cost-effective manner. National Grid is the sole supplier of natural gas to our community, delivering its products and services through pipelines which lie beneath public streets, roadways, and lands, as well as privately owned residential and business properties. Primary oversight of the work performed by National Grid is provided by union inspectors employed by National Grid, and periodic visitations from inspectors from the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. Local permitting only provides oversight from gas meter to the inside of the building or structure. According to correspondence received from David Gendel, Director of Community and Customer Management at National Grid, the work continuation team, employed to ensure uninterrupted service to the gas customers during this lockout, includes approximately 600 contract employees and roughly 700 National Grid management employees, including supervisors who typically oversee the union employees. In a report provided to the Board at our August 20, 2018 meeting, a review and survey of several ongoing construction projects indicated that a moratorium of issuing permits from National Grid may adversely impact the progress of those and future projects. The report also indicated an increased level of frustration from some developers of the current delay in services by National Grid. Developers spoke to the risk of shutting down their projects or seeking alternative energy sources because of National Grid's inability to meet time-sensitive needs and deadlines. Additional correspondence from Mr. Grendel included in the report further indicated and verified that National Grid is focused on emergency and mandated compliance work while doing a very limited amount of non-emergency work. He stated that they would do their best to prioritize the work and accommodate requests, but the reality is that they won't be able to get to anyone, to everyone. It would appear that issuing a moratorium on permits requested by National Grid would have minimal effect based upon the minimum amount of non-emergency work being performed. Under current circumstances, the examples of non-emergency work described in correspondence would be cases where we, as a board, would hope to be prioritized, prioritized and accommodated. A moratorium in those types of cases would do more harm than good. Public and employee safety should not be compromised. While it is recognized that all workers are mandated and required to have certifications to perform tasks, it is of concern that members of the work continuation team are less experienced and proficient than the locked-out employees at the work responsibilities and tasks they are now being called upon to perform. Additionally, the current management employees would, who would normally be providing oversight on employees and projects are now performing the tasks themselves with potentially less independent supervision. Union inspectors with project oversight responsibilities have been locked out, calling into question quality controls, and raising potential safety concerns. The locked-out employees are first responders in emergency situations and are professionally trained and experienced. Our first responders, police and fire, and the community at large rely on National Grid to provide, to provide the best skilled workforce. Until National Grid puts the locked-out employees back to work, the administration, our administration, should coordinate the issuance of permits to National Grid with the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. The town should request inspectors from DPU to provide verification of workers credentials, credentials, and necessary oversight of all permitted activity. In the absence of the DPU assistance, the administration, in its determination on a case-by-case basis, should provide adequate inspectional oversight by appropriately trained town staff or contracted services. The costs associated with the additional oversight is to be added to the permitting fees charged to National Grid. The administration should request that National Grid provide a list of workers and tasks assigned to each worker and their certifications for each permitted project. At the discretion of the administration, the listings will be forwarded to the DPU for verification of certifications. The administration should provide the Board, on a monthly basis, a list of activity and permits requests, permit requests of National Grid. The administration, on behalf of the Board, through written correspondence, should encourage the state administration become more heavily involved in facilitating additional meetings between National Grid, union representatives, and federal mediators in an effort to resolve the disputes. And finally, the administration, on behalf of the Board, will forward this correspondence to appropriate National Grid management, and reiterate and re-extend the Board's invitation for National Grid to address its concerns.
So, to, just for clarification, you made a motion to read this into the record?
And basically have it be a directive to the administration as to how to handle the National Grid permitting process moving forward.
So your motion is reading it into the record, and then moving that we order all these directives to our administration? Do I have a second?
Second, and the reason is that, a few minutes ago, I said I don't have a good idea how to resolve this issue, and I think putting a lot of pressure on the DPU, and getting the state to start to realize that there's a problem that they need to get involved with, will help, and I think this is a, a way of doing it. Now, I don't know what other communities are doing, but I'm not against this approach, and therefore, I've seconded the motion.
Again, Madam Chair, the, the approach that I've taken is it allows a significant amount of discretion on the part of the administration as to which projects they need to double-check. If it's just a tie-in to a home, short run, short line, no. If it's a major project like Pulte, yes. We want to make sure that we have competent people there, they have competent people there, who are certified to do the work, because the normal people who are there to oversee it aren't on the job, they're locked out.
Discussion on the motion, Mr. Schultz, do you have anything to add to discussion on the motion that's on the floor that's been seconded?
No.
I'll add, I completely disagree with what is being proposed here. It shifts all of the burden, liability, and responsibility from National Grid to our administration now, and I am completely opposed to what is being proposed here. So let's have a vote on the motion.
Would you, my question, Madam Chair, would be, would you have any proposal in order, how would we address it? How do we get our concerns as a local community up to a higher level, and get National Grid's attention, and get the governor's attention to address the issue and move it forward?
I think it's highly unfair for us to now place this responsibility on our administration, who's already tasked with a good deal of its own responsibilities. I do have a proposal. I thought, but, but we have a motion, we have a second, if we're going to take a vote on it, let's take a vote on it, but I, I did prepare what I thought would be a resolve that would be appropriate, because I, too, was in a, was in a quandary, but I'm 100% certain that I'm not in favor of what you are proposing, so I'm clear on that. So we have a motion, we have a second, do we want to take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
So the motion fails by the time due to lack of majority.
Fails. I'm happy to move on, or I'm happy to discuss.
No, I'd like to hear your proposal.
I thought what we had talked about as a board in terms of this, we had agreed a moratorium was ineffective, but what I did propose was a, what I would like to propose in kind of reviewing everything that was put into the packet in the last minute, is something, by way of a notification to National Grid.
One page.
It's just a one-page. You haven't seen it, I apologize, but again, this was a last-minute thing, based on the two, what you had placed and what you had revised. And the purpose of this resolve is because we do recognize we'd like to take some effort or make a stand, but we're mindful of what our Board members are saying, it's a private collective bargaining agreement, but what we're here on, and what we're concerned about, we don't really have the public safety concerns that are being presented in what was just vote, what just didn't pass, but we should be addressing it in some manner. So, by way of some sort of communication directly to National Grid, is what I thought you were going to be proposing, and we can resolve that you put it in a letter to them as a clerk of our Board.
Can I just interject one thing? You said you don't have the safety concern. The safety concern would arise if these projects move forward with the replacement workers, and that's, that would be my concern. I understand that there isn't a lot going on in town, but my concern, I live close by to where the Pulte Homes project would be, and my concern would be, is if somebody that's inexperienced, that isn't used to doing this job, is now completing that job, what safety issues could arise from that. I mean, that's the reason I'm here. I understand that there isn't a lot that normally goes on, but it isn't a safety concern until they start, until they start operating within the town of these projects.
I, I understand your point, but what, what we heard from you directly is these are the same crews that you, that you've been working with previously.
If that's who's working these projects now while this lockout is going on, some of them are going to replace us. We don't know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions here. So, again, we appreciate the Board taking this time to seriously consider the safety and the support. Obviously, you said, "We don't think there's a issue," I mean, obviously, I believe I heard a couple of people have some concern with, with the safety, and then, again, if something could happen tomorrow that would change that, and then you'd be taking that up. You do moratoriums all the time every winter, you do it all the time, for the safety and convenience of the public. It's a similar thing. You certainly could take some action, you could, again, with the oversight of a special project with oversight, maybe a fire detail watching. project with oversight, maybe a fire detail watching when they're digging near a pipe, you could do something. And again, that's just for us to bring up, we appreciate it. If you don't feel that there is an issue or it's a DPU matter, then that's the will of the board, then that is. But certainly there is some concern, we're just here for that and bringing that forward. Thank you so much.
I can appreciate that. I just, I'm opposed to imposing it upon our workers to do that necessary qualifications check and making sure there's licensed, trained, qualified people doing the job. That's on National Grid.
It is, nothing, and maybe we'll miss insight of that. Any of the emergencies or any of the laws doesn't exonerate National Grid in any of this.
That's right.
It's what can the town do to think of anything else while this is going on to make things as safe as they can or to mitigate any risk, and that's all we're just trying to bring to you. We have 20 complaints just ourselves, and they're only, we know they're violations. I know when they put an airator in a manhole wrong the opposite way and it pushes air back into the manhole, back in, that happened in Lowell a month ago. I know that's not quality, that's not how it's supposed to be, but until they can come out and investigate, which they're short-staffed. So, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, we appreciate you coming here and giving us your input, it's important to hear from you. So, does anyone have any comment? Mr. Schultz?
Guys, I want to help you out here, but I don't want to take a side, but I do want to help you out, because I think you guys have a good-faith dispute. If I may ask, when's the last time you guys sat down for a bargaining session?
Two days ago, two days ago.
Okay, and is there another session planned?
Yes, there's two more next week.
Next week? Why don't we, as a board, especially with our chairman not here tonight, why don't, we've already spent an hour on this right now, and we could probably go to midnight on this issue. You're going to meet two more next week, why don't you guys come back to our next meeting on the 17th, and we can, when our chairman's here, we pick this issue up. I just, I'm not comfortable with what I just saw.
Well, it's only, it's only one page, and it's big print, and it's taking a stand, which is what I think the collective desire of the board to do is.
Yeah, I don't know if that is the collective desire.
Okay, well, that's all right, let's hear from the other members.
Can I just ask for a clarification, Madam Chair, so what's your, you state here a few bullet points. Presents concerns for our community regarding safety due to uncertainty as to the level of training and qualifications of replacement workers being utilized by National Grid at the present time, so.
Right, we don't know. You haven't given us any evidence that they're not qualified. We know from the law they're required to be qualified. We have heard, now we've heard multiple times, so we are going around in circles now on this issue.
No, this is, no, my question is.
We don't know.
No, but I'm hearing you, but you want that as part of the resolution that you're proposing.
Right, right.
So I'm hearing, I'm reading one thing and hearing a different thing, I guess, I'm confused. I want to support anything.
Right.
To move, to get on the record of raising some concern here, so.
But I don't think we know, I don't think we know that the workers that are being utilized, because they've been being utilized, are causing any greater safety issue.
But that's not what you're saying here. I guess, that's why I'm questioning it, only because I'd be happy to.
Strike it.
No, I'm not looking to strike it at all, I'm with it, but it didn't sound like you were with it, but you're proposing it.
Yeah, I don't hear anything that tells me this is, that the crews that they're using, which they've used previously, are causing any greater safety concern than would have been caused previously. But collectively, we have discussed that as a problem. I think the greater problem to North Reading residents and business owners is their lack of ability to get this work done because they've locked out all their workers. So it does have a direct impact on us in that aspect, although we have heard from our directors saying we don't really have much going on here. But I wouldn't want the disruption, the potential disruption that this is going to cause to affect us either, so. You can wordsmith it, Mr. O'Leary.
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to embrace it, but what I'm reading is not what I'm hearing. I guess that's my only concern, is put something together here, but.
Well, I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we can say for certain, we have people that are involved in this active dispute saying it could be. We have public safety saying there's no greater risk than was previously. We have people that are actively involved in this dispute confirming it's basically the same crews that have been doing work previously, so. Mr. Schultz?
Gentlemen, you guys are meeting twice next week, how fast do your union can vote on something, to get everybody together?
If we had something, it could be within two, three days.
Okay, so it's pretty quick. I have no problem supporting something encouraging both sides to get together, and I know you guys are willing to negotiate, but I think anything we send from here should encourage both sides to get to the table and work together, and lock the door and don't leave the room until you have an agreement, for lack of a better term. I don't think we should just single out one side. I do agree, though, if National, if, with a capital I, if National Grid is using unqualified people, that's a problem. We don't know that to be a case, but if they are, that's an issue, and I know what you guys, I've already heard you guys' position on that. I have no problem supporting something that encourages everybody to come to the table, that's where I stand on it.
Mr. O'Leary?
The issue is that there's 1,300 employees, right, that are not working, and if they were working, the supervisors would be doing their job, the 700 other people they bring in, they'd bring in anyone.
As needed.
As needed. So it's a shortage of people that they don't have to deal with projects, and it seems like the only way this is going to get settled is by the union and National Grid to continue to talk and come up with a solution, go to arbitration, whatever. Unfortunately, it's not like what we deal with, especially with police and fire.
This is not a public employee union.
They can't go on a strike, and we can't kick them off the job, because law doesn't allow us to do so.
Right, right, okay.
Just in relation to a comment you made, Madam Chair, in relation to, you know, the burden that's being put on our administration that should be with National Grid. What's been proposed here is, the additional burden is, write a letter to the governor, require National Grid when they ask for a permit to provide a list of the workers, and for us to forward that list to the DPU. It's not an awful lot of additional burden, and again, and it also allows significant discretion on the administration as to which jobs to worry about. So, you know, I take exception that the way you're presenting what's been proposed isn't a significant additional burden on our administration. It's not. I've worded it as such so that it wouldn't be, and it allows significant discretion.
Well, I'm not confused, but we have a difference of opinion in terms of it. So let's move along.
So are you offering this as a motion?
I can't. But you asked me if I had an alternative to propose, and that was my alternative, and I can't.
Can you gentlemen come to our next meeting? Give us enough data?
Certainly can.
Okay, I would, we appreciate that, I know you're taking time out of your family and your, you know, I want to see you guys wrap this up early, too.
So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just something that I would like to add, so the DPW director referenced, I think, six permits that are pending that were, some of which I think were active at one point, expired, and then reapplied for all at the end of August last month. Again, they're broken down into abandonments of services, which probably have very little impact upon a development, new services, which could impact a development or could impact a homeowner, and I think there was some sort of a regular regulator or other type work, maintenance-type work that was to be done on their system. We are aware of residents in town who are waiting for work to be done, and I don't want those residents who might be watching this or reading about it to think we've, you know, we're not aware of it. We have received calls from folks who have said, "I'm waiting for a new gas service because I'm converting from oil to gas," for example, and National Grid has not scheduled it, not been able to schedule it because of resources. I don't, I want the public to know that we are aware of those. Again, will they be scheduled? Again, it remains to be seen, we just don't know. But for those residents at home who may be watching this or read about it after the fact, we are aware that there has already been an impact for them as well. Thank you for the opportunity to offer that.
Thank you. All right, we need to move on to the next item on the agenda.
What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is just read your resolve into the minutes and for action at the next meeting. All right, so for the, for the record and for the minutes, Madam Chair has proposed an outline for a resolve to be considered by the board at our next meeting. Resolve that it is the sense of the members of the North Reading Select Board, well, we're not there yet, but Select Board, hasn't been signed into law yet, that communication should be sent to National Grid by the clerk of the board stating substantially the following, that the prolonged dispute between National Grid and its union employees, who have been prevented from work since June 25th, is placing services at risk or delay or disruption to our businesses and residents, presents concerns for our community regarding safety due to uncertainty as to the level of training and qualifications of replacement workers being utilized by National Grid at the present time, and is likely, in the end, ultimately to impact ratepayers at large financially. Therefore, the North Reading Select Board determines it is necessary to communicate this resolve to National Grid to take immediate steps to return its qualified and trained employees to service while the parties resolve their collective bargaining issues. Select Board holds National Grid accountable for any issues, hazards, and injuries caused due to any work performed or provided by less-qualified or less-trained replacement crews. Finally, the Select Board also deems it necessary to advise National Grid in writing of its current position and that it will continue to monitor the need to take more serious preventive measures in the near future if National Grid's prolonged failure to return these qualified and trained employees to duty presents any risk to our citizens. And this is to be considered at our next board meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the minutes. August 20th, 2018, regular and executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the August 20th, 2018, regular session minutes as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the August 20th, 2018, executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next order of business is the middle and high school driveway and a vote to approve the order of taking and a vote to sign the plan.
Madam Chair, through you, more for the edification of the members and of the public, yes, we did vote on this order of taking at the June meeting, if you're wondering why it's back up in front of us again. We had a question relative to the accompanying plan that the board was to sign, which was not included in the motion. Took us some time to try to figure out how that plan was to be handled, given that it had already been endorsed by the Planning Commission at a prior meeting, and ultimately, we were able to resolve the question about this plan, but not within the 30-day window in which we were required to record the order of taking. So the board's being asked to revote the order of taking, as well as to vote to sign the Mylar Plan, which we have here this evening, can be signed at the end of the meeting. It's an administrative action at this point, we've settled with the private property owner relative to the land in question on Park Street. There are no damages, part of the exchange was a paving of an apron off of the driveway, which took place when the road was final paved more than two years ago, and we asked the board to vote and sign the documents.
So it's ministerial, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, it is with great pleasure, after all this, again.
Again.
Again. I move to approve the order of taking for the parcel of land shown as parcel A, area equals 127 square, plus or minus square feet, on a plan entitled Acceptance Plan and Street Layout Plan, Middle High School driveway, North Reading, Massachusetts, with a revision date of December 24th, 2015, prepared by Welch Associate Land Surveyors Incorporated, to sign the order of taking to award damages in the amount of $0 and to sign said plan.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, through you, just a note relative to that matter, there will be an action at town meeting to convey that property to be taken by the town, again, through a so-called friendly taken, taking, to assign its custody to the Department of Public Works as part of the middle and high school driveway. That's on the warrant for the October town meeting, and we'll explain that on the floor of town meeting when it comes up. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just a question for the town administrator. The approval and signing of the Verizon Cable Franchise License Agreement?
Yes.
That's been taken off?
Correct.
Can you just give me a brief summary of why?
Sure, so as the board knows, they were asked to re-sign the Comcast Cable License Agreement at the August 20th meeting, which the board did. We then forwarded it to Comcast for execution, we are awaiting its return from Comcast to then provide it to the Cable Advisory Committee, who are going to need to provide it to Verizon in order to conclude their negotiations. So that's kind of where things stand at. No necessarily holdup, but it's more working its way through the approval process.
I was wondering if some other issue happened.
Sure, it was left on the agenda through you, Madam Chair, because we just weren't sure whether it was going to be returned in a timely fashion or not, so out of an abundance of caution, we left it on the agenda today, it wasn't here, we felt it was fair to take it off the agenda.
All right, our next order of business is an annual municipal review of town-owned land.
Madam Chair, through you, this is something that the board does, I believe, by, both by policy and by bylaw, to review the status of all municipally-owned land. So we forwarded the list of land to a series of departments by virtue of a memorandum that we reviewed at an earlier meeting, and what we've done is basically provided a spreadsheet that shows the, those that responded with some level of interest. We tried to sort it by the number of responses that showed favorable interest in a particular parcel. So that's all included in multiple pages of a spreadsheet that, in all honesty, I was not expecting that we were going to review in detail at the meeting this evening. It's followed by letters of interest from a number of individuals, and I'll just go quickly through those. One is relative to property adjacent to Bear Road in North Reading, one letter relative to interest concerning property on Riverside Drive, a letter of interest relative to property abutting 92 Burrows Road. Those are the ones that are pending at this point in time. We've received informal inquiries on other properties and encourage them to reduce those inquiries to writing, some of which have not come in yet. But this is something that's required, again, under the bylaws and town policy, we've completed the action, we forward the board. The board may wish to schedule further discussion at some point in time, or may wish to file for action, for no further action.
Any comments?
Just in relation to any request for property, and I know it goes through the normal review process, but we have a, maybe some new consideration in relation to possible wastewater treatment and need for pumping stations and things like that, so particularly the Olomans Pond area, so if there's something like the Bear Road, you know, maybe we should run it through, again, just to take a critical look at the request for those types of properties, and we may even want to take a look at what properties we already own, and we may want to, again, separate those out.
Reserve.
For future wastewater expansion.
Sure, okay.
Any other members have any comments? So we will put this on for further action?
The board could perhaps discuss in detail the three requests we received at a future meeting.
I think that's appropriate. Mr. O'Leary?
Please, spreadsheet.
Yes.
Can you make that available?
Yes, we can make it available in an Excel spreadsheet. I believe there's a folder in share file for town-owned land, which we'll add it to, and if there isn't, we'll create one.
So, can that be done soon, so the day before the meeting, running through it?
We could probably do it Monday, right, Ms. Brooks? I think Monday we can upload it. You have custody of the thing, right?
Thank you.
Oh, it's in check, okay. Maybe Monday, possibly sooner.
Monday sooner.
Okay. So, we'll take that up further, take that up further one of our next meetings. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the review and discussion of the October town meeting warrant article.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have provided a copy of a draft of the warrant, which after tonight's meeting, we'll send to Town Council for review and comment in advance of the Board signing the warrant potentially, or actually needs to sign it, on Monday, September 17th, in order to make sure that it gets to homes in accordance with the town's charter and bylaw requirements. For those who might be listening or watching at home, I believe we're at 23 articles at this point in time. We have all of the language on for those articles. I believe we reviewed the list at the last meeting. I can't recall if we had any additional articles added, but I know we changed the order of the articles by virtue of the request that came in. I think it was related to the snow removal article with the bylaw amendment being Article 21, proposed by the Board, the citizens' petition to repeal the bylaw relative to snow removal on streets and sidewalks being Article 22, and the name change from Bryan's Way, from Bonpel Drive to Bryan's Way being Article 23. I will note that the... There are a number of articles for which we're waiting for cost estimates. One of them is relative to the wastewater collection system planning and design. I believe, Mr. Chairman, you've asked the Chair to... Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I believe, Mr. Mosseri, you have asked the Chairman to place on the agenda for September 17th a discussion of the wastewater so that we can better frame what the intent is of the Board. After that discussion, my impression and what I believe would take place is we would then get a proposal from the consultant to reflect the Board's desire and only then would we know the actual cost estimate for that project. Relative to the Article 12 on the water system improvements, we're not expecting to request any funding at this point. We believe that we have sufficient funding in place from the June town meeting. There may be an appropriation requested under Article 12... Excuse me, 13, for the acquisition of water system property, which, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. O'Leary identified in his comments earlier in the meeting. But that is where the draft of the warrant stands right now. Again, one thing I'll just kind of provide an update on, the funding for survey engineering design and/or construction for a portion of Swan Pond Road. So, that was submitted by the Department of Public Works as a follow-up to the June town meeting. We do have a form for right-of-entry for the properties that will be circulated among residents, from what I understand, tomorrow. And I've asked the engineer to stress the timelines and the importance of a timely response by the residents and how that will impact our ability to take further action, whatever it might be, at the October town meeting. I will say, in all candor and certainly with no intention, there is work to be done to obtain the sign-offs and then conduct the exercise. It's taken us longer than I would have liked to get this form to the point that it needed to be at. It's not intentional. I know there's frustration on the parts of the residents. I know there's frustration on the parts of some of the approving bodies as well because we may end up in a situation where we have information of value leading right up to that October town meeting. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but, you know, given the number of legal complexities with this and the timeline required to get the form developed, it did take us longer than we would have wanted. But we do have it in place and we are distributing it beginning tomorrow. I want to thank the town engineer, not here this evening, but is kind of spearheading that. And I know he's going to be in communication with Ms. Cravata relative to the best way to directly access people. So, the intention is to distribute a paper flyer and mail it to the owner of record as well so we can get them back as quickly as possible and get in there. And again, we are committed to, you know, looking at if there's a first phase of abutting properties that we can get at to try to advance this along. I think that's something we would consider so that we can make some progress in a timely fashion. We know that there may be one or two properties that are not interested. I think, at this point in our knowledge, those are at the end. So, they're not contiguous to the whole project. So, that would effectively shrink the area that we're talking about. But we'll eagerly await the response back for that approval to enter the properties, to do the work that we need to do. And I provided a similar update to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee meeting, at their meeting last evening as well. And they are aware of this project and watching it with interest. So, I think those are all the significant things that have come up since the last review of the list of articles. Obviously, this is the first the Board is seeing of the draft warrant itself. The next step, as I mentioned, will be to send it to Town Council, ask them to review it, provide any comments. And we'll have a so-called clean copy for you to sign in the presence of a constable on September 17th.
Any members have any comment, questions? Mr. Mosseri?
I'll just make a comment regarding the sewer. We did get from our engineering consultants the cost of the sewer in an estimate form. I now have it broken down in pieces, which includes work that has to, we have to pay for in Andover. I'm now trying to get a count of the betters who would be paying for all or part of the cost of the sewer system so we can determine what the betterment cost is going to be.
That's great. Good progress.
And this is going to be a big sell to the community and we're going to have... The plan would be to have some form of report for town meeting, focus more on why we need to do this.
It's exciting news.
Yeah.
Because the Board is in a strategic plan wants to raise our commercial tax base, you know, which is now at about 12%. I don't know what the goal is. We probably should think about that a little bit and then determine the investment, how it's going to get paid. So, there's a lot of work to be done between now and town meeting, but a good part of the information is available. And we have another meeting coming up before our next meeting.
We have a meeting next Wednesday, right? We're meeting the 12th.
And as Steve said, he's arranged a meeting related to some property that we will need to build one of the chlorine addition plants as part of the Andover water program.
Are you guys honorary citizens up there?
Although, this is local. This is still taking a while. We're not back up there yet.
So, in terms of that, just in terms of what we had talked about throughout that negotiation process and the expectation for people that are watching or listening, it would be the Main Street corridor and Martin's Pond area?
Well, it starts at the Andover border on 28. Goes down, all the way down 28. Ends on Park Street. Goes down Carncott Street. There is some plan to put some line up toward the center of town that we have to make a decision on. And then, we do know we will be required to provide sewer to the Martin's Pond area. The EEP will require that. And the question is, how do we go about getting it done? In terms of the betters, how much are they going to pay versus the entire community? Because there is a benefit to the entire community to have sewer. But the plan is definitely not to sewer the entire town. Main focus for doing this is to provide sewers in the commercial districts where there is an opportunity, based on studies, to grow our commercial base. If we can get our commercial base to 20, 25%, which would be a... 25 is probably a long stretch, would be a significant benefit to the taxpayers of the community because right now, they're bearing the burden. And if we have a larger commercial base, like a lot of the other towns around us, we will have a better control on the expanding tax rate on an annual basis.
And obviously, the program will call for phasing of the system, you know, as far as, you know, the buildup of the system. But we're going to have to develop the entire plan. Again, what the consultants are looking for from the Board is guidance as to how far do you want them to go? And so, we're...
And one of the more important things, too, is that Andover committed to help us with the sewer, which has to go through their town. And we need to keep that communication going before they forget about it. We don't want that to happen.
Any other comments? Do I want to ask the members what you want to do with snow and ice? Or do we want to not?
I can give an update on that.
That would be great.
We've met myself, Chief Murphy, Pat Bowers is there, the business community, Jerry Venezia, and Eric Evans with them. I hope I didn't leave anyone out. We're trying to come up with a solution, kind of the middle ground on this. We've kicked a few ideas around. We are going to meet again prior to town meeting. And the goal is to have a unified... Not have two dueling motions on the town meeting floor, but to have something concrete to go forward. And I know we're meeting again in a few weeks. So, we'll meet... We're going to meet again with them before our last Board meeting, before town meeting. Hope that makes sense. So, we'll have a Board meeting to discuss what they come up with. So, that's the... We're kind of kicking a lot of ideas around now and, you know, trying to find a solution. It's a clunky situation. It's been... How many years have you guys dealt with this issue? Like every year for the last?
Forever.
Forever. We're trying to figure it out.
Since we put the bylaw in place.
Yeah. So, everyone's working together, which is good.
Members have any other comments on the warrant articles right now?
Don't hurry for the snow. That's my only comment. We're not in a hurry.
Put a dome over the town.
Yeah, yeah. Might be cheaper.
Mr. Gilberto, anything else on that agenda item?
No.
All right. So, moving along, we are at number 12, appointments. Martin's Pond Committee.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment as a member of the Martin's Pond Reclamation Study Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2020, Joel A. Spruance, Four Travel Way.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you for volunteering.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Arthur Kenny Field Restroom Concession Stand. Vote to approve the payment. Vote to approve the change order if necessary. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, I'm going to allow Mr. O'Leary to deliver the good news.
Mr. O'Leary.
This is it, huh?
I shouldn't say, I'm going to ask Mr. O'Leary to deliver the good news.
There is good news, yes. The project is complete and it looks good. And we're satisfied. So, we should pay the bill. Is that right?
That's accurate.
That's accurate.
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair, I move to approve the payment requisition number nine in the amount of $38,489.66 to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Mosseri. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
And just as a comment, again, to the committee that was working on this from the very beginning, when we couldn't seem to get this thing off the ground, I'm moving and prices kept escalating and the number of fixtures in the facility kept fluctuating. You know, congratulations for them for sticking with it.
Looks great.
And again, fortunately, as bids came in within the appropriation, we're able to put that facade on there, which matches very nicely. And it's getting a lot of use already. It's working well. So...
I did have the opportunity to go inside. Heather Laverdia was man in the shack for a soccer tournament, and it's amazing. Do we have any leftovers from this or is it all spent?
No, it is all more than spent. And again...
I'll provide just a brief update on the budget. So, you know, we had an agreement, commitment by the Friends of North Reading Parks and Recreation to cover any overage in the interest of being able to pave that driveway access for utility purposes so that wouldn't damage the pedestrian walkway. We're still working to identify exactly what that dollar amount is in terms of the overage. The project did end up costing more than the appropriation, but we had a commitment to cover the balance up to a particular dollar amount by the Friends of North Reading Parks and Recreation. We're just working to reconcile that now. So, I don't want to lose sight of their commitment and their support as well, which got that done, along with, obviously, the work of the committee.
It's great. Thank you for everybody for making that one happen. That was a long, long time coming.
Spends a process, too. But it's done. It's completed. And it's going to meet our needs for the foreseeable future. So, it's great.
I was going to...
And it completes, it caps off that facility, too.
I was going to wait till our final comments, but at some point, maybe through the capital planning, we should consider buying the, you know, commercial-grade stove and refrigerator and freezer equipment for it. So...
That's for...
That would be a great... It would be expensive or at least an upgrade to what's there. I think what was there is donated, which is excellent and is in good use. But it's a little bit old and there's no shelves in the refrigerator. So, it's a little clunky to use. But just keep it in mind. You know, we have this amazing, beautiful, new building and it's going to serve the community for years and years and years to come. It's going to get good use. We should maybe consider putting some, you know, quality equipment in there for the people that are using it, too. So, that's just my two cents. All right. Town administrators' report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd ask the indulgence of the Board because I do have a number of things to offer comment on this evening.
You have three minutes. Make it fast. No, I'm... Please.
I don't know if I could do that. And most of it, I mean, I think all of it is of value to folks in town. I'm going to start with a utility advisory that the Department of Public Works is going to be putting out. And it relates back to the comments that I believe Mr. Mosseri and other members made earlier. I'm going to read it, just in the interest of getting it out there because I think it best captures everything. But this is an advisory, a utility advisory from the North Reading Department of Public Works. Regarding the trash and recycling fee, as we all know, the quarterly trash recycling fee is charged to residences that participate in the town's solid waste and recycling program. It increased effective July 1st, 2018, to an annual fee of $272 per unit. The fee is $68 per quarter. And most homes should have received the bill in the mail this week, as it was sent out at the end of August. The increase to the $68 reflects the first change in 10 years, as was indicated earlier. The current contract governing solid waste recycling collection is in effect through June 30th, 2019. And further modifications to the trash recycling program may occur when the contract expires. I think we've talked at length about that. Regarding water bills and the water meter replacement program, North Reading Water Department's currently in the process of upgrading the town's meter system, as we know, which includes a replacement of all the existing residential and commercial water meters connected to the municipal water system. The new metering technology allows the Water Department to provide more accurate and timely billing to improve customer service through an enhanced ability to detect and stop leaks and to better answer questions about water use. The new system will also provide customers the ability to track their water usage directly and receive alerts for unusually high water consumption. And I'm going to be posting this as an advisor on the town website, too, if folks are interested in reading it. Most customers will receive the standard water and trash and trash and recycling bill combined in the mail. In areas of town where meters are being replaced, the water bills are slightly delayed due to the transfer of data associated with the meter replacements. If the water section of your water and trash bill is blank and does not show any water usage information, you'll be receiving a separate water bill for this quarter within a few days. The water rates for fiscal year 2019 were unchanged from the rates in fiscal year 2018, and that was pursuant to a hearing held by the Board in June of this year. The new water meters are red and built to the nearest gallon as opposed to the older meter system that rounded down to the nearest 1,000 gallons. Please note that in the event that the start and stop date for your current bill exceeded the typical billing quarter, which is approximately 91 days, the water volume allowed in each tier was adjusted to account for the longer reading cycle. The town anticipates that the period of time between bills will be uniform once the new meter system is fully functional. And that was a big selling point for us, that we'd be able to predict when the bills would be issued so that we wouldn't have a lag in time with people getting 100 days billed, particularly in the high-use season of the summertime. So, we're eager to get that implemented. particularly in the high-use season of the summertime, so we're eager to get that implemented. Residents are reminded that the current water bills are for summer, the summer billing quarter, in most cases, beginning in May and ending in August. Water usage for a summer quarter can be significantly higher than for winter quarters due to the outdoor water use, resulting in water bills that can be much higher than the last water bill you received. Again, in the event that the start and stop date for your current bill exceeded the typical billing quarter of 91 days, the water volume allowed in each tier has been adjusted to account for the longer reading cycle. Probably the most important thing. If you have a question about your particular water or trash bill, we encourage you to contact the water department, either via email, which is water@northreadingma.gov, or by telephone at 978-664-6009. Particularly in the case of a new, a home with a new meter, we can evaluate fairly quickly what your water usage has been, determine if there's any issue of your concern. So, we strongly encourage anybody with any question to reach out to the water department. That's the first of nine items.
Bring more mic.
Mr. Mosseri?
Just, I know I talked to you on the phone about this.
Yes.
But the past two water bills, not just this one, before, we've been on the new meter. Our bill said zero. And then, because we pay the bills through the town website, when we go to pay the bill, and in most cases, it's a day or two later, the amount was it. And then, a second bill came in the mail later. And I only question it because it's been two billing periods.
So, you had called this to my attention, and I did have a conversation with both the finance director and the water superintendent, and we did not have an immediate explanation why it happened twice in your particular instance. But if you have the information that you received in the mail and could give it to us, either to Mark or to myself, we want to kind of dig at munis and see why that's happening. Because I'm sure you're not the only person that it's happened to, but you're the first that we've heard to hear it happen twice.
Right. The second time, there was a notice.
Yes, right, right. So, if you could...
I'm just curious, is there maybe there's some software issue that needs to be fixed?
It sounds like there is. It would be helpful to have the, just the documents that you received, just to validate.
I'll see what I can find.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
The second thing I want to note, again, related to the water replacement program, is that the installer has scheduled door-to-door home visits for this upcoming Saturday, September 8th, and they're concentrating their home visits in the area of town, which is east of Central Street. And the purpose is east of Central Street. The purpose is to identify areas where we've mailed postcards, perhaps directly interact with the residents who haven't been able to schedule their, their water meter change out at a time that might be more convenient for them. I think everyone can attest...
Coming to my house, then.
East, not west.
Oh, they did give us a postcard, I'm telling you.
Oh, okay. So, the, it's, again, for most people, it's a very quick interaction, so...
They must have finished with west.
If you're, if you're home, and you're able to afford a few minutes, it generally takes very little time, so...
It was total 21 minutes in my house, in the house. Start to finish.
Again, the bigger hassle is obviously clearing out the access if it's blocked.
That was about 21 days.
But I just encourage people to be aware that they're coming to, we've alerted the police department that this door-to-door canvassing will be happening, and, believe me, we're well aware that an unannounced visit at somebody's home is not what it used to be, from a standpoint of interacting with the public, but we are at a point with many of these residents where we don't know what else to do in order to gain access, so...
Will they have, by way of an ID, that can be visible to people when they look out the door?
So, my understanding is that they're carrying identification relative to what their role is, and they will identify themselves for the purpose that they are there. It's not a town or North Reading employee that you'd be interacting with, although there may be somebody in the field supervising to some extent. It will be a contractor from USI, who is the contracted meter installation company.
Mr. Schultz? Yeah, Mr. Gilberto, I think you might have mentioned, but I did get some inquiries on it. When was the last time we raised a trash fee?
About 10 years ago. I think it's exactly 10 years ago, actually.
Thank you.
Couple of things, maybe not quite as lengthy. Job books for the senior citizen tax rebate program will be available beginning this coming Wednesday, September 12th. The books are located in the town clerk's office in town hall, the O'Leary Senior Center, and in the Flint Memorial Library. There will be a meeting to inform potential participants of changes in the program. The meeting will be here at town hall on Wednesday, September 12th, at 10 o'clock a.m. I included a copy of the notice, which we also put up on the town website. And again, just to reiterate, the changes are good and bad. The good news is we are increasing the dollar amount to $750. We are also increasing the hours from 94 hours to 100 hours, but that still washes out to an increase in the hourly rate. People are permitted to work less than the maximum of 100 hours if they're not able to work that 100 hours, so we ask them to consider that. We are required to consider the income, we are required to tax the income for federal tax purposes. That's something that we've been advised of recently, so that will be new. It's something that would have occurred regardless of whether we increased the dollar amount provided, but it was brought to our attention. Fortunately, Massachusetts state tax law does not make that income taxable, but federal law does require that it be taxed. We're going to go through that at this meeting. We won't be able to answer particular questions relative to somebody's particular tax situation, but we are going to explain what the changes are.
Just in relation to that, are we going to be issuing a 1099 or a W-2?
W-2.
W-2?
Yes. And there's, is that advisory from the DOR on this, it's pretty clearly spelled out what we're required to do. And it's not what we've done in the past, candidly, but that's the guidance.
So, are these seniors going to have to contribute to some sort of a...
OBR, Medicare. And then, they'd be eligible for a refund after the year has elapsed if they have not participated, or, so...
Why could we not give them a 1099 and put it in box three, which is a lot simpler?
We'd love to, I think, but the advisory from the Department of Revenue is that it's treated as taxable, that they are employees, it's treated as taxable income for federal tax purposes.
But issuing a 109... Okay, I'll have to take a look at the advisory again.
Sure, and it may be worth having a conversation with the treasurer as well. She can speak more to it than I can, so...
That's bizarre. You know, for $750, again, they're not employees per sec, and it's...
Well, if they weren't getting the increase based on the decision, and it was still by...
Well, it was under 600, no, it's under $600, and there's nothing needs to be issued. It's the $600 threshold which triggers things, generally, and I think it's bizarre that they need to go onto a W-2, pay Medicare taxes.
They end up paying social security.
Well, that's, we're not social security, so it's, so are they going to be forced to participate in some sort of a deferred comp?
OBR. An OBR contribution, yeah.
Mandatory.
Unless there's some exemption that I'm not aware of, that might be a case-by-case, but the general, the general advisory that we've been given and intend to provide to the participants is that, yes, they would need to participate.
Do we do that with our summer help?
I couldn't speak to that up first, and I don't know.
I mean, it's small potatoes, it's small change, and it's, and they're not...
And I don't know whether the summer help qualifies.
They're not going to be getting any significant amount, qualifying them out where they would be required to participate, but anyway, I think we need to push back a little bit more.
Pushing back with the Department of Revenue.
Yes. But anyway, okay.
So, again, we just want to make people aware of it more than anything else at this point. We've tried to advise folks to the extent possible, but I'm, you know, offering it here again, we're going to have a meeting to try to apprise folks of what we've been The town's information technology department's in the process of updating the telephone system serving town departments in the town hall, the senior center, and the Flint Memorial Library. Our legacy phone system, which is a Nortel PBX model that was fully metered billing using 15-plus-year-old technology that has been without manufacturer support for a few years now, will be replaced with a voice-over IP system with flat-rate billing, effective tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock a.m. The project will replace aging, unreliable equipment and create a more flexible and more cost-efficient phone system that's projected to save the town approximately $6,000 per year. While we do not anticipate any telephone outage during business hours, the public's understanding of any potential inconvenience is appreciated. Departmental phone numbers will not be changing at this time, although some consolidation may occur in the future. Non-emergency phone systems in the public safety complex will be addressed at a future point in time, and the improvements will not impact 911. Truck-mounted mosquito spraying was conducted on Tuesday, September 4th, for the neighbors of North Reading that are located in the vicinity of Turner Drive, Patriot Way, Abbott Road, Green Street, and streets off of Chestnut Street. I'll just remind folks, we have information up on the website relative to how to protect yourself, using bug spray, avoiding exposure between dusk and dawn are the best practices. There are no restrictions that are in place, but they are recommendations. There were more cases identified for West Nile virus in Wilmington and Tuxbury nearby today, so we just ask folks to, you know, exercise, you know, best practices to protect themselves from potential exposure to mosquito-borne illness. The Community Planning Commission, working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission as its consultant, has created a new master plan, is creating a new master plan for the town, excuse me. Information regarding the project may be found on the CPC's webpage. Residents are encouraged to participate in an online survey and upcoming public forums scheduled for September 26th and October 30th, both at 6:30 p.m. The town's Home Rule petition to establish more flexibility in scheduling the date of the June and October town meetings was signed into law on August 30th. Copy of the law was attached to my report, and I thank Representative Jones and Senator Tar for their efforts. I'm told that the petition to rename the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, is under review with Senate counsel. It passed the House of Representatives on July 23rd. We were requested to provide information today to the state archivist, to which we did, so hopefully that will move things along in Senate counsel, and we'll get that legislation signed into law as well. Funding for year three of the town's federal youth substance abuse grant was approved by the federal government last week, so we're pleased to see that. We're in a five-year grant program with them. And finally, the DPW is preparing to begin two substantial paving projects on Havel Street from North Street to the Andover Line, and on Park Street from Main Street to the Wilmington Town Line. And I even noticed it was going out to residents, and is up on the town website as well. Just ask folks to be aware of that work, which is upcoming to be done in two steps, so we appreciate the public's patience. And that concludes my report. Thank you for your indulgence.
Any questions? All right. We have all the new business. Mr. O'Leary?
All set. As we mentioned earlier, just be careful, the kids are out there, they're on the streets.
Mr....
The school buses are out.
You always say that every...
I've noted.
Yeah.
No, I have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I'll be real brief. There's, I got to make sure I have the facts here. We have two children here in elementary school in North Reading who suffer from Usher Syndrome. Usher Syndrome is a leading cause, genetic cause of hearing loss and vision loss, deaf, blindness. Children are typically born with hearing loss and slowly lose their vision. The vision loss is a slow progression. There's going to be a benefit for this foundation, which I think is a very worthy cause, and we have two little girls in our town that are affected by this, that will lose their vision, probably as they reach their late teens into early adulthood. That's going to be September 20th at Giggles on Route 1 in Saugus, and I encourage people to go out. It's a great cause, and it affects, again, two kids in our town that, you know, it's a disease that people don't know a lot about, but it really, we need to find a cure. That's all.
And I'm all set. I think we've talked about everything that we needed to talk about, so do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?